All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order as December 12th. No, it's not. It's December 19th, Finance Committee. I see that Councilmember Keppel is here, Councilmember Bullock is here via Zoom, and I got an email at the ReadSomething. Find that email. Okay. Okay. So... What am I supposed to do with this? Am I just supposed to state the ordinance, or is this a motion to? Yeah. What is this?
Thank you, Councilman. The ordinance allows for the non-present member to vote as long as the head of the committee indicates and authorizes it substantially in the language that I have proposed to you.
All right, thank you very much, Director. Well, as Chair of the Committee pursuant to Lakewood Codified Ordinance 109.01b1, I'm calling for Council's meeting this evening. Okay, Finance Committee, I have to insert a bunch of words. That's okay, I can handle it. Finance Committee is meeting for December 19, 2022, to be held by video conference due to the special circumstances of the illness of Councilman Bullock. Under 109.01c, Councilman Bullock need not be present for the purpose of voting and determining a quorum. All right, so decreed?
Correct, Councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I took the roll, acknowledge that. Let's go to these minutes. We're just going to do the one. So I will move for approval in the minutes of December 12th meeting of the Finance Committee.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Sure. All right, that motion passes. So, let's see. We're going to continue with Mr. Papke's, interim Director Papke's, I can't get these titles right, presentation. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Councilmembers. I guess I'll hit Admit again. All right, so here's our engineering and construction team that take care of our engineering projects. Okay. So, wanted to give you an update on the IWP progress and what we've made over the past year and where we're headed. The HRT startup and commissioning is well underway. We are working on the, we completed the, just about the preliminary engineering for CSO 052, which is going to be down at the wastewater treatment plant where the animal shelter currently resides. So, as a part of 2023, we will be working on the design and permitting over a two-year duration for estimated $1 million for those design and permitting for that project. We're working on the Andrews and Gladys project, the water main replacement. So for next year, we'll be working on the post-construction monitoring and pollutant data collection for Andrews. And that's going to tell us how well that we're progressing with the sewer projects. We've completed the partial consent decree with the regulators, and we are into the Lewis sewer improvements, which have an estimated cost of $3.75 million for that project. We completed the Summit Outfall Rehabilitation. The construction cost came in about $58,000 under budget, which is good. We did receive the OPWC grant money for that project, $423,750, and that was completed in June of 2022. We've been working on the Lake Clifton Connector Project, which is a project sponsored by Cuyahoga County Department of Public Works in partnerships with the cities of Rocky River and Lakewood. Design is planned for 2023 and construction in 2024. For 2023, we are, our cost share for that is estimated to be $50,000, and that's basically to handle the water main crossovers. We have about six areas where our water main crosses Clifton, and while that's going to be under construction, that's a great time to take care of those water main replacements. A lot of those, that infrastructure, some of it's well over 100 years old, so it's just a good time to do those. 2024, our estimated share for that project's going to be 800,000, and then it'll probably be 100% of the water main crossovers that we'll be responsible for. Ongoing is the Lakewood Park Foster Pool Project. That's well under construction. Matter of fact, this week, we're hoping to do the pool floors, get those poured this week. We secured 150,000 in ODNR Nature Works Grant for that project, so that'll be well underway, hopefully being wrapped up here in 2023 at the start of the pool season. Lakewood Park parking lot improvements. We've been working on the plan and layout for that. We plan to bid that in 2023 with construction, kind of mimicking what we did with the Foster Pool Project, trying to get that work done when the park's less occupied. The major work items would include adding 38 new parking spots, new walkways for EV charging stations, resurfacing the lot, burying overhead utility lines, putting in new lighting, a much-needed new storm sewer system, and then rehabbing the existing sanitary and performing landscape improvements for estimated cost of $2.2 million for that project. In the world of our GIS and asset management, Josh is constantly working with all the departments in City Hall and outside of City Hall, and just helping making improvements by designing dashboards for managerial analysis, expanding field applications throughout City Hall and across multiple departments, fulfilling our NPDS permit with quarterly sampling that's now required as a result of the HRT project. He's been doing integrated wastewater division and mobile app collections that he collects, that he creates, that the guys are basically, you know, whenever we're putting in a new water curb box or working on sewers, they're capturing that data. We're getting it into our system. That way, we have, you know, really good management as to like, when's the last time we've been to a house and where, you know, their testes are located and curb boxes. We've been working citywide on infrastructure manhole scanning, and we are about 20% complete, and just working on all the various grants. Josh does a great job in helping us present to our various funding applications, able to give us some nice details on that. So he works across all those boards as well. Hilliard resurfacing and bike lanes. That project was intended to happen in 2022, but I think because of the pandemic and just shortage of labor and other various items, that project was delayed and is expected to go to construction here in April. This is now in the Cuyahoga County Public Works hands, so they'll be bidding it and awarding it and monitoring it. So we have 10% contribution to those funds for construction. The major project that we have going on right now is the Interceptor Tunnel Rehab. We are nearing completion on the design of that project with the intent to go to bid here in the first quarter of 2023. We were awarded a $2.4 million grant from Ohio Public Works Commission, and we've applied for Water Pollution Control Loan Funds and some other funding agencies for that project as well. The major tasks that have been completed during 2022 is the cleaning of the interceptor, the televising of it and laser scanning all 19,000 feet of it, getting the soil borings done, surveying, working on community outreach planning, maintenance of traffic for the 12 shafts that'll be required for that project, and just meeting one-on-one with impacted businesses and residents at each shaft location. The refuse and recycling stockpile yard. We bid initially the refuse recycling, stockpile yard, and animal shelter altogether. The initial bid came in over budget. It was 9 million, so we ended up rebidding just Phases 1 and 2 only. And we awarded that project to Millstone, and they're working on the new recycling center and working at the refuse truck, the renovations there. They did get the salt dome that was in the rear of the property, demolished this past week, but they're making very good progress. Start seeing some of the walls already going up. I was there this morning, and we're progressing well on that. We also received an ARPA grant from the county in the amount of $1.5 million for that project. We are planning to bid the animal shelter in 2024 as the Phase 1 and 2 project gets wrapped up. Other major public works engineering projects, the former Lakewood Hospital Site, we regraded it. We capped off the PCE, and we had great news that we're able to discharge now stormwater to Lake Erie and not have to pump it anymore to our wastewater treatment plant. And we also did some further site improvements for the development by removing the buried sewer or the old creek bed that ran through the site. So we rerouted that, making it buildable. We've been working with RTA on West 117th and their project there, working with ODOT on Cuyahoga 90 reconstruction from Hilliard to I-490 in the planning stages right now. We had some major emergency projects. Ethel, we had a sewer collapse near Clifton that luckily was, kind of came before we resurfaced it, so it worked out good that we were able to get that before we paved it. We're replacing the sanitary main on Valley Parkway that goes over the Rocky River. We just had a meeting today about that with the Metro Parks and partnering with them for that project, which is expected, probably construction, I think, we're in February of 2023. We are going to have to replace an 8-inch water main over at Foster Pool. In 2022, we had 14 private development sites that we did plan reviews and inspections on those projects. We work closely with the planning department on those. And then Dominion, their gas main replacement and meter move-out coordination and inspection. That's just, every year, we're working on projects there. Excuse me. Our 2023 goals are managing, you know, all our public works projects, design, bid, and construction, continuing private development oversight and utility company projects. We're going to be doing a study on burying overhead wires along various corridors in the city, bid and construct Bell Sewer Right-Away lateral replacements, and starting our next outfall project, which is at the end of Cliff and Wilbert. We have two outfalls over in that area. So that kind of gives you a little bit of a highlight of what we've been up to and where we're headed for 2023.
Thank you very much, and thank you to your department. And I just want to mention that the work that was done on Summit and Edgewater, the neighbors were really complimentary about how the whole thing was handled and how the work was performed the entire time. And so, it's just something.
All right, I appreciate that. You know, construction, you know, these past couple of years have been very difficult. We have, you know, shortage on concrete. We have shortages on pipe. Water main, you know, it's taken like a year to, you know, once you place an order, a year to get it. So we're really faced with a lot of challenges, and Summit was a good example of, you know, good communication with the neighbors. We gave them weekly updates as to the progress, and it came out very successful, so I really appreciate that comment.
Great. Are there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Council.
Thank you. Thank you, Acting Director Papke. I just wanted to offer also a compliment for your work with the businesses on Madison with the Dominion project there. It was very much appreciated, and also thank you for stepping into this role. And it's probably maybe more than you ever wanted to take on, but we really appreciate you filling in and doing a great job with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll share my thanks with my colleagues. And also, I got my hair cut today. And my hair, person that cuts my hair mentioned that she had some folks from the Public Works Department at her home this week, or no, last week now, and she was just really impressed with how just hardworking. She just couldn't stop talking about how amazing our staff was and your staff was at handling her sewage problem backup issue, and they're working with her to this day to help through this week, to help get that sorted. So she said, I told her I was coming to the meeting, that I'd pass along that thanks to you and the department. And I hear those thanks echoed all the time up at the level of professionalism amongst your folks. So keep it up, doing great work, and look forward to working with you again next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I did not cut my hair today. One, two, I was curious, not that it's hard. I was curious regarding the burying of lines in that pilot project. I know I've had residents in my ward interested in such a thing. I'm curious kind of where that's happening and what the impetus is for it, if it is resident-driven or city-driven, or what the case may be.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit of both. So I think, you know, we're going to be looking at the various corridors that we have and trying to figure out similarities. If we have, you know, some streets that just have, you know, just streetlights that have overhead wires, and looking to see, you know, what it would take to bury those, and, you know, just looking at the various alternatives that are available and what anticipated costs are. You know, probably about 10, 15 years ago, they always said it's a million dollars a mile. So I don't know how much that is now. Nowadays, a lot of it, you know, depends on, you know, the amount of utilities and also looking at how you connect it to the property itself. So we'll be taking a dive into that and coming up with where we think it makes sense to do burying utilities.
Thank you. I'm curious if Edgewater in Ward 3 was contemplated for that?
Well, I think, you know, we're probably going to look. There's probably, you know, maybe 10 different types of, you know, overhead utility-type corridors, and, you know, we'll be looking at, you know, the various ones, and I imagine Edgewater would probably be one of those corridors.
Okay, so we don't know the streets yet, is what I'm hearing?
No, we don't.
Okay. And then, you know, capital stuff is financed and funded a little bit differently. I don't know if it's a director-rank-a-tour question or what, but if a quick summary on how these get financed on these larger projects would be, I think, wise or helpful, just for the committee to understand in here.
Well, I mean, you know, first and foremost, my department looks at what grant availabilities that we have. A lot of sewer projects, we're looking at Water Pollution Control Loan Funds, OPWC, ARPA, all the different various types. I mean, some of these projects that we have have multiple funders, just help reduce the amount that the city has to put forth.
Thank you. Instead of the way we financing aspects of our capital budget, my assumption is yes, and if so, what?
I would just like to add that on pages 169 to 183, it delineates the capital budget. Inside there, a couple of years ago, what we added were the funding sources. So you could see specifically, you know, whatever project you're looking at, how it's proposed to be funded for the upcoming year or whatever year that's listed there in the five-year capital plan. So that is listed in there.
Thank you. Can I have?
All right, Mr. Bullock?
Hey, everyone. I can hear you, but I can't see you, so I'm at a disadvantage. But thanks for the accommodations today. I do not have COVID tested that, but I am sick as a dog, so discretion is a better part of valor. Thanks for letting me be a remote participant. My questions that I had are along the lines of what Councilman Litten just said, which is getting at the question of how do we afford this? It seems to me, by memory, Director Rancator and Assistant Director, or Acting Director Papke, that are we doing more big projects these days than we used to? Like the complete rehab of the recycling facility and the stockpile yard and all the rest? So the, that's really good and admirable work, but if you, how do you get your hands around the needs versus our capacity? We've talked at length about the sewer system side of that question, but, you know, without us asking you, I can't claim to know the state of the various, like the garage behind City Hall, the parking lot behind City Hall. There's a lot of facilities we have, and do you have a, you know, a five-year plan beyond what's our capital plan shows is what we plan to do, but that doesn't necessarily show all of the needs? And Peter, I did hear what you said about page 1, is it 169 in the budget? I think that describes the different funding sources that we're drawing from. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Councilman. So, I mean, what you're looking at is, or what we look at each year when we determine the capital budget and the size of the capital budget, it's really kind of a balancing act. We have to weigh between what our available resources are, what our debt capacity is, and really the kinds of things we can do for grant funding. So as Acting Director Papke mentioned, he does an outstanding job really of finding any and all available monies along with our grant writers to help us reduce those project costs that we have. And really, anytime you're dealing with, you know, the engineer, those are all big-dollar projects, and I know he's brought in millions. We should probably put that on a spreadsheet and actually show them that every year, because it's a lot of money that we are getting in grants and really, you know, low-interest or no-interest loans too, that we've gotten in the past. So it's, we take it all into consideration. The budget process is very collaborative. We talk about it. We just try to determine, hey, what's the best way we could pay for this? And then, you know, we kind of look at what's important, what we need to do now, and just decide what gets funded and how from that point forward. And Mark, I don't know if you had anything else to add?
No, I think that's, you know, well-stated. You know, we went over, you know, in the previous session about, you know, roads, how we determine, you know, how much we get done. You know, we keep an eye on, you know, that plan, especially with sewers in water main that we're replacing. You know, we hit the benchmark of like 5 million a year for water main replacement. So I think that, you know, next year is, you know, pretty much on track with what we've done previously.
Thank you, yeah. I know that in a separate correspondence today, Director Rancator talked about trying to anticipate and reserve additional capacity to offset some construction inflation that we've all been experiencing. So I don't come at this with any particular angle other than I'm just curious to hear what we think. You know, do we have any facilities that our plan is, geez, I hope it doesn't break for another five years until we can get past some more immediate budgetary needs? And if that's the case, I imagine probably is for a city with as many facilities as we've got, do we need to be even more, do we need to be figuring out ways to allocate even more for capital? Just a seed for thought or, you know, question for future thought. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the other thing that we ought to look at is staff capacity and the ability to manage those projects. So we have to make sure that, you know, we're adequately staffed in order to do that, and I think we're, you know, in a good position that, you know, we're not taking on more than what we can handle.
Is that all? Anybody else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we're now moving into whatever it's called, the member substitutions phase, and I know that Director Rancator did send us a couple substitutions. If you want to go over those first.
Mr. Chairman, each year as part of the budgetary process, we'll submit these ordinances for 2022. What you have to keep in mind is those ordinance are as of a specific time when they come in. So six weeks ago, when the budget was due by charter on the 15th of November, we also prepared the 22-year-end appropriations. So when we submit that, that's kind of like our picture and timing. Keep in mind that all accounting and financial reporting is always done as of some point in time, and that's what it is. You have to have some kind of cutoff, and as of that date, those were, you know, our best numbers for 2022. It's been six weeks. We have had, you know, much more time to look at things and kind of tie things down and look at any changes or projects or bills that have come in and make adjustments with that. And so when we put these ordinances together, you know, we put them together as of that date, and then... And then, you know, now's kind of, we're at that point where, yeah, we have good numbers now. We want to be able to put these in there and tie those, tie those numbers down at this point. So we don't have to come back, you know, sometime after the beginning of the year to, to do the process over again by passing, you know, a temporary budget for now. So pass the transfer ordinance. The transfer ordinance gives us, you know, the authority to pass an amount up to the amounts that show up there. And we're just going to make the determination as we go. We don't want to make it such that we don't have enough room to do what we need to do. Whereas at the end of the year, we always have to have certain funds that are always in the positive, they're, they're not in the positive, that violates, you know, the state auditor's requirement that all of our funds be positive. There's a number of funds that the general fund supports like CDBG. So we're kind of out until we get reimbursed by that. And then, you know, a big, big chunk of money will come in at some point. But a lot of that is just, again, when you get into accounting and financial reporting, it's as of a certain date and it's, you know, timing. We don't always, we definitely can't control when the federal government is going to give us the money. We always like to have it as soon as we can, but there's, there's a process we go through and we want to make sure that, you know, we have all that stuff tied down as well as we can. That help?
When you say one at a time, Mr. Chair, all, you mean all?
Ordinance 35-2022, we have final substitutions of appropriations, Exhibit A and B. If you're able to, and if you did so already, but I'm just too dumb to understand that you did, you can tell me that in nicer words. But in, for Exhibits A and B, what do those substitutions mean specifically?
What I was trying to explain-
Yeah, sorry.
What I was trying to explain before is really when we prepare the initial ordinance in November, that's as of that date and that point in time. And we've had, you know, six weeks come since then, and we've been able to tie the numbers down a little bit better as to how we're planning out the year-end 2022, because that's what this is.
Okay.
And it always kind of dovetails into 2023. One of the, the big things we always account for in this process is our financial reserves. So on page nine of the budget book, and I think in the reserve policy, it's like page 183, maybe, it, it kind of goes over the, the financial policies and how much we like to have set aside for those things. That includes things like the budget stabilization, the separation payments that we make for employees. So we, we want to kind of have that funded for the 2023 budget when we do the 2022 year-end ordinance. There's the 27th pay. There's economic development. You know, this year we had a lot more income tax refunds than we've had in the past. And, you know, that's not necessarily a bad thing because, you know, it's a function of our income tax revenue, which does a little bit better this year than what we would have expected. So those, those kinds of things get baked into that ordinance. And, you know, we spent a lot of time and effort trying to tie those numbers down to be the very best that they can. I think we're at that point. And this is something that, you know, we kind of go through each and every year. And Director Schuster, I don't know if you want to kind of chime in about what the process has been since you've been here and, you know, we've had these kind of ordinances come up.
Just to, as a clarification, our process, as Director Rankitour says, is a point in time in November, now that we've had the, the extra weeks, we believe these are the best final numbers that, on the appropriation side of what will be spent. So from, you know, since 2008, these, this has been pretty much the process that we've gone through. We know it's kind of late, but we want to make sure we get the, the best numbers because we don't want to come back before the end of the year to have you guys go through this process anymore.
All right. Thank you. Then, of course, as we stated previously, the transfers, kind of like our normal quarterly transfers, in a sense where we're just trying to make these books balanced. We have money, we got to move it around and put it in certain places, at the layman's way of saying it, or?
Exactly.
Okay. Great.
The, the other things, if I could just kind of walk you through the, the financial agenda too. The item number three is really the 2022 year-end appropriations. Number four is the, the transfers for 2022. Number five is the 2023 budget. And the rest of them from, from item six through 15, those are all the contracting authority ones. So those are all kind of similar. Number 16 is the CDBG, so that one's a little different. And then also number 17 would be the year-end salary ordinance that Claudia always puts together for us.
Okay. Great. Is there any questions on those couple of matters?
Mr. Chair, just related to the salary ordinance, other than suggesting one, the, the name of one council office position, what were, what were any other material adjustments to the salary ordinance?
The updates to the salary ordinance included adding the Assistant Public Works Director position. Do you mean since we last spoke?
Yes.
Just that? Okay. The only other adjustment, removing the legislative liaison for council, was changing the Grants Administrator position to a Grants Manager position, and that's it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you. We, we had a email dialogue, we being Finance Director and I and maybe some other council members that wanted to at least get on the record some of that discussion, which was, I thought was very helpful and thoughtful. So the questions that I proposed, or posed rather, were about both of these. There's questions from, one or two questions for both proposed ordinances, substitutes. And that is, in the year-end 2022, why do we see a large increase of more than $7 million in the general fund? And much of that is driven by a $4.5 million increase in general administration other. And Director Rankitour answered, but maybe he could further detail that. Then I also asked, in the transfers and advance ordinance, we, we do that quarterly for good internal housekeeping reasons. But this time, there's a few new proposed categories, capital projects, winterhurst and the parking fund. I think that might be the three new ones, but, but I welcome a correction if, if there's more than that. But the, and then Director Rankitour said that the general administration is a way by which we can meet the city's reserve requirements. I'd love to hear that. If I follow you correctly, Director, maybe what we're doing is we're allocating those funds. They may not be spent. In fact, they probably won't be spent, correct? And then, and then maybe you could share, you know, just for the public meeting, the points you, you shared about Winterhurst, the capital projects, and then the parking fund. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock and Mr. Chairman. Mr., to answer or respond to Mr. Bullock's comments, the general administration, as I kind of mentioned before, encompasses those things that are in our, our financial policies. Do we spend that? Not necessarily, but some of it, yes, we definitely spend. For instance, the separation payments, what we've seen over the last maybe year and a half is there's been a lot of departures from the city, whether it's been from just job hopping or, or people retiring. So we've seen a lot of retirements come through recently, and we found that, you know, we have to definitely make sure that we have that funded. And that's, that is a big expense. Other things like the, the budget stabilization, you know, we're allowed to have in there up to 5% of the prior year's revenue. So we like to fund that as much as we possibly can. That's what we, we did this year. We refunded that one at the maximum allowed by statute also. Other things that are in there, the 27th pay, we'll end up having that go out the door with the 2026 year. So a big chunk of that's going to get wiped away. So we're saving up for it now. We, you know, we'll have enough by the time that that year comes. And then, you know, what you see in that, that balance, like it showed up on page nine of the budget book, that's going to kind of probably drop considerably after that year. We'll have to start saving for that process again. So it's a process whereby we-
So, so if I can interject, the point here is that this line I'm highlighting on the screen, general administration other is, they're all personnel-related expenses. We're, we're planning ahead prudently because some of those are one-time events or once every somebody-year events for retirement payouts and separation payments and things. And, and what you're, if I read between the lines, we think that we have enough cash at the end of 2022 to be able to do this, right?
Correct.
So that, and, and why is that? Is that because our receipts were, our revenue was stronger than we forecast or cost savings? Or is it a benefit of ARPA funds or a mix of all of that?
ARPA wouldn't have anything to do with it, but, you know, any, it's traditionally how we've really funded our, these, these very vital categories in our budgetary process and we're able to take care of a lot of things that, you know, we might not otherwise need to do if we didn't have the money set aside for it. So if you had, if you had me budgeted for 2023, I might be like, gee, I don't know if we can come up with this for 2023. But look, here for 2022, we have the capacity right now to be able to put away X amount for our budget stabilization, X amount for our separation payments. We really want to try to take care of that now while we have the ability to do that. Otherwise, you know, if our employees retire next year, maybe we'd be in the position where, oh, boy, we didn't put any money away for that last year. At some point in the year, we're not going to have enough money to pay them. I remember years ago, working at the Regional Income Tax Agency, and, you know, there was one city, I won't mention their name, but they, they didn't want to give out any refunds because they didn't have any refunds budgeted. That's also one of these kind of categories that's in here that we, you know, we also provide for in this category as our income tax refund. So it's all part of the planning process, and we definitely want to make sure that we have, you know, planned as best as we can for any and all eventualities and we don't have any financial crisis on our hands.
Very good. I applaud that. And I know even in, like, years ago, we had a time when we couldn't hire people on time basis to replace a vacancy or retirement because we didn't, because of that issue you just described, we owed the retiring employee a certain number of months. And during those months, we weren't hiring to replace because we didn't have the reserves. I appreciate that. And then the, and then this is the transfer and advance ordinance. And so we see, looks like the law enforcement trust fund is financing their account, but then you've got a new capital projects, a new, two new enterprise funds that are getting transfers. If you could share about those.
So earlier, we kind of talked a little bit about some places where we've been trying to plan for our future. One of them is at the Winterhurst facility. So we, last year, I think we recognized that Winterhurst was going to cost us some money at some point, and we really wanted to be able to plan for that. Worked closely with planning, planning, and Director Leininger got us somebody to take a look at the facilities. They came up with the results of that, and yet to upgrade it, it is going to cost us a considerable amount of funds, funds we don't have today to do all that. But there are some things that we can definitely probably do, so that's why we're trying to put some money into Winterhurst. We started last year through some, you know, quarterly transfers that are, are coming through. At some point, now that we see, you know, the, kind of where, where we're going to end up and with, you know, the inflationary factors that'll end up on all these capital projects that we're doing, you know, we're, we're concerned about having to, you know, take out debt for the whole thing. And we just want to be able to plan for this by paying for whatever we can now. If we have to take out debt, you know, our debt load could be too high. When our debt load gets too high, that's something that the investment community looks at. If your debt load's too high, they could, you could get a downgrade from the current bond rating that we have. We do have an excellent bond rating for a city our size. And that good bond rating helps us pay less in interest. So when we go take out our debt, we at least are able to pay less for our interest because they know that we have good financial policies, practices, and a good financial position. So that all kind of plays into that. You know, another thing we kind of talked about was the parking fund. And the parking fund in, back in 2019, the parking lot that's attached to the hospital was, we started to temporarily put money into that fund or into the general fund because we thought the property was going to be sold, developed right then and there, and it didn't. So the money's been going into the general fund for some time. You know, kind of thought about that and was like, why is that money just going into the general fund? And what can we, can we do with that? One of the things that we definitely can do with that is put it in the parking fund, I think, where the, where it's needed. So, you know, with the newer age, when we have the new parklets and maybe the parking revenue isn't coming in the way it was before, this is a way to get that fund, some money, which I think that's where it should go. Also, you'll see a little bit later in the council meeting, we're going to introduce some legislation that talks about EV charging and where that should go into our chart of accounts, which we want it to go into the parking funds. This is going to be a way that, you know, we can help prop up our resources to be able to pay for things like EV charging stations and, you know, the electricity that, you know, we have to pay, we do have to pay the electric bill for that. So all that's going to be, that activity is going to be running through that parking fund. So basically, we kind of changed the name of the fund just to generate a parking fund and want to make it, to be able to cover, you know, public spaces for, you know, transportation type things like, you know, whether it's, you know, regular motorized vehicle, EV charging, scooters, anything that might happen in the future. So that was kind of the, the thought behind that so that we're prepared for that. So I kind of hope that answers the questions. You know, I think we kind of talked about some of the other funds also that traditionally run in the negative. I know I mentioned CDBG, but there's also ESG, family-to-family, FEMA, juvenile diversion. These are all things that, you know, the general fund really ends up supporting. And, you know, we, we have to bring their balances at least up to zero to end the year. So that's, that's what we're always trying to do, is show that. Otherwise, we will get a citation from the Auditor's State's Office and really try to avoid those.
Very helpful. Thank you. Appreciate the detailed conversation. The advances are just internal loans that will get reimbursed if I understand it correctly. The transfers are the ones where we're, we're essentially reallocating funds. And I, I do appreciate the foresight involved in all three of those areas. But it, it's another example then that we think that these amounts of 550 plus 625 plus 121,000, we had enough general fund strength to be able to propose those allocations, right? So that's well north of a million. So that's positive news, given how uncertain the economy has been. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything else on those? Oh, no. Go ahead.
Thank you. Director Rankitour, could you tell me about the change with the information technology section on page one of Exhibit B? We had, in the original document, we had about $2,080,000. We had, in the original document, we had about 2,087,000 in that line and then that's gone to 1.5.
Just to summarize, I would say that it's, it's things that we're encumbering for next year to be able to pay for large projects or projects that are carrying over for next year.
So at this point, we have about a little more than a half hour left. I do want to thank, take this time to thank everybody in the administration, the mayor, all the directors, whatever Coletta's title is or comes and goes, call him out especially, great job. Interim directors, just taking the time, and I know a lot of work goes into this and really appreciate you all being here tonight. I do think, believe it's important that everybody's here available just in case council does have some additional questions prior to approving the budget. So I'm going to ride the next about 20 minutes or so because I do have to get a bunch of these out of committee and I do have to read all the ordinances. So whoever wants to kick off their either thoughts, things they want to see different or further inquiry into the budget, now's the time. So would you like to go, Mr. Bullock?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And I'll have to practice my screen sharing because I'm not as fast as others. Let's try, finally got the screen here that Councilman Kemble was talking about. But anyway, day late, dollar short. Yes, the, so there's three things I wanted to raise or suggest to my colleagues. One is easy, very easy, one is easy-ish, and one is medium. And that is, I got to find my email. Okay, so the first was to make sure we had enough funding for electric vehicle charging to serve internal to, so if the vehicle fleet were to get electric vehicles for our own city personnel use today, right this minute, we don't really have a way to charge them. We've got two chargers in the service garage so that the mechanics can do what they need to do. But in regular use, if we were to get sometime this year, a truck or a light duty vehicle, we would, we would need new capacity at one or more locations. And so I'd spoken with Councilman Rader informally about, about talking to the administration about supporting that. And Director Anketor pleased, had the good news that it's already on the budget and I'd missed that. And so I thank the administration for planning ahead for that. Is there a number of the budget, is it in the budget book that we can find that or is that somewhere else on a spreadsheet?
It is, it is in the budget book. I can find you the page here. I'm looking online momentarily.
Okay, great. And, you know, maybe I'll figure out a way to display that. But the point is that, as from memory, you said 50, up to $50,000, which should be more than ample. And so that's great. I appreciate Mayor George's continued support for adding some clean vehicles, which also should save us money in this energy inflation market. The second one is the city council budget internal change only that would have zero cost, zero effect in terms of raise or lowering output. But what I'd like to suggest to colleagues, whether we consider this tonight or another time, is that the very expensive membership of nearly $5,000 for legal, National League of Cities, that we don't pay that. And it's a transfer to the training account, training and travel account or line. Talking informally with our council clerk, we could still enjoy travel to the national conference. We pay slightly more for that ticket, but it would still be economically beneficial to city council to, to do it that way. With the possible exception, if there's council members who are really using all the materials that the National League of Cities puts out, then you might take a different view on that proposal that I'm making. But I personally don't use it and I can't keep up with all the free news letters that I can already access from regional associations or from all kinds of professional associations on different topics about city government work. So that was my thought is, I actually thank, I think it was Councilman Litten and former Council President Romali who really led the charge on adding more training funds. And as it's turned out, I've benefited from that and agree. So the proposal would be to just shift that expensive membership fee. I can stop there and then there's one more idea, which I'd love to propose.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just only because this, this, these items were discussed as, as Clerk Bach and I and Vice President Kemble and others sort of discussed our council office budget for 2023. You know, 2022 was sort of an unprecedented, or at least in recent memory, unprecedented year for travel and conferences for members of council. And so keeping that amount where it was and actually using it seemed appropriate with where we were at and things of that sort. There's also, I mean, there's some guidelines in place for who goes to what and things like that, but they're just guidelines, I would say. I wouldn't, if I'm, I don't know, if any member of council ends up wanting to attend some sort of ongoing education, I'd imagine there's a way to make it happen if we really wanted to without having to really change what we have before us in any way. I think we've been able to reallocate where necessary this year in order to make things happen. Would love as much advanced planning on that. And in fact, would love to hear from members of council if they intend to attend something in the coming years, maybe know that by the end of January at the latest, just so that we can see if there's any creativity that we need. But at any rate, I feel comfortable with where that portion of the budget's at. I, I could go either way on the National League of Cities piece. I see some benefit to it. We've had members attend their national conference in the past. I, I note what you said, Councilman Bullock, that you could still attend without being a member. I also am curious, I just can't remember, is our administration of the mayor's office also a member in any way, shape or form of National League of Cities? Just us? Okay. So this is, okay. So and maybe that's another discussion, but, but we could potentially consider sharing that membership with the administration at some time.
So I mean, I'll leave it in council leadership's hands. Thanks for the discussion, President Litten. You know, if another council member is making good use of that resource, I don't want to step on anyone else's toes. On the other hand, if nobody's using it, it's just a very expensive annual membership fee that will go out the door as opposed to a training which some of us might go to, but inevitably we don't always go to everything. So there's actually a little bit of savings. But I just want to flag that for consideration. I don't think we need, you know, I'm not going to ask any formal action tonight, but thanks for your consideration. The last one is with the CDVG allocations. The long story short would be, I think where I'm headed is I'd like to personally express support for use of ARPA funds to make the Lakewood Alive Housing Outreach Service Program deficit whole. That's a modest cost of $70,399. And I call that deficit, they applied for 61,200. The CAC and the allocation from the federal government only allowed for $43,801. So you put those two numbers together, it's a difference of 70,399. So that probably is the simplest thing to do. I had an informal conversation with Director Anketor and Mr. Story about the fact that there are ARPA funds that are available for, you know, potentially available for uses like this. So I'd like to indicate my support for that. The bigger version of this discussion would be, you know, I started doing some calculations about this, but it's a little late in the game here, would be that if we were to find new accounts out of which we could fund the cities programs, and by that I mean human services, division of aging, senior supportive services and the early childhood scholarship assistance, 100 million percent support those programs and allocating funds to those accounts. But if we were to find, the current proposal is to award those programs $77,512 in the coming years, CDVG allocation. If we had, if we could find a different home for that somewhere in the city government budget, that would make more room for nonprofit partner applicants such as Neighborhood Family Practice, which is our free health clinic, such as Journey Center for Safety and Healing Victim Advocacy Services. And then two Lakewood Alive programs, one of which is fully funded, I appreciate that, and then Lakewood Community Services Center and all the work they do. Those collective applicants had a deficit of $60,385. In other words, less than the amounts that were, that the CAC proposed to award to our two internal programs. You know, so, so that's kind of a macro budgetary question maybe, like traditionally, the city's done as much as we can with scarce resources. CDVG dollars have been a source of stable funding for some of our human services work and that's very worthy work. But if we think we're financially stronger today compared to 15, 20, 30 years ago, perhaps we could shift all or part, part is good too, and then just make that much more room for nonprofit partners who, even though they're not city government, they do community work to make our neighborhoods affordable, appropriate for aging in place, safe for people who are experiencing abuse, you know, all essential functions I'm sure we all support. So that was the insight that I kind of had during our budget hearings. I'd welcome some thoughts, but maybe for tonight's purposes, this is a question for council leadership problems. Is there a way that I can act or support that shortfall for Lakewood Alive's housing outreach services? Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, I know that we had discussed a robust application process for utilizing ARPA dollars, particularly ARPA dollars allocated to councils per view. If it, if it suits everybody here, I don't have a problem, Councilman Bullock, with you allocating a portion of your ARPA dollars here and now in finance committee to Lakewood Alive. I think, you know, we're going to have applicants, we're going to have things we've never heard of, we're going to have things that aren't tested, tried and true in our city that might apply for those dollars. Lakewood Alive doesn't fit that category. They're an obvious partner that does a lot of the work that, that, you know, that they're more nimble to do on behalf of our, of our citizens and our city. So speaking personally, I don't have a problem here in finance committee or through what other means necessary that Director Anketor would need with, with you utilizing your allocated ARPA dollars for this purpose.
Thank you.
Which also takes the idea of having to find a way to cut somewhere in order to assist Lakewood Alive as part of this discussion, at least as far as I understand it. Noting that they're one-time dollars, but you could also allocate it over a number of years if that made sense.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mayor.
Just a point I'd like to make regarding ARPA dollars. My, my thought would be council would probably want to develop a thoroughly vetted process to ensure fair applications. We have a lot of nonprofits, community groups, and we want to make sure that everyone has an equal opportunity to probably present their case. Also, just a thought too, Tom is an ex officio board member of Lakewood Alive. There may be some challenges with presenting that and I think we kind of want to fully vet all of this. This is my thoughts. Council can do what they want, but just some, some things to consider that we want to make sure if there is a process being developed that we're making sure it's open to all nonprofits, community groups within our community.
Sorry. I forgot that I'm not chair. I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lennon, did you have anything you would like to say?
My tail would twill my legs. I apologize. Thank you, Mayor, for those statements. One, I was speaking for myself when I made my comments, not for this whole committee or for council's whole. My first thought in reaction to your two statements, one is, is that while I think we want to have a process, you know, I think I could see making an exception for Lakewood Alive for what Councilman Bullock is looking at. And then I don't personally think, secondly, that they're, I mean, ex officio is ex officio for a reason and it's because they cannot vote. And so he, he could not, the councilman could not vote to approve accepting those funds or applying for them or anything of that sort. And that's why they're made ex officio is to avoid these sorts of conflicts, at least as far as I understand it. So provided it has the approval of the, of the law department, I would have no problem with using the funds for that purpose personally. But that's also a discussion we could have in January and, and we don't need to have now any further, though I love talking, trust me.
Director Barry.
Yeah, I just really wanted to weigh in really quickly about particularly any kind of defunding of the human services programs or transferring them out of the CDVG funding alley. I don't think I really need to espouse all the benefits and reasons why both of these programs are important for the city and certainly families. Economic development, I think with the voucher program, we're also supporting small businesses and we're supporting families. And I think it's a very unique program, certainly in Ohio, it's a very much needed program. You know, the vouchers that we provide allow people to actually earn a living wage where the county vouchers, you really have to be making for a family of two. And most of these, we have to keep in mind, are single mothers that are applying for it. You would have to make $11 an hour. And if you made anything over that, you're not even going to be eligible. So this allows people to live in our community and it really supports folks that are not, would not normally be able to live here and have a family. Certainly, the senior supportive services program, you know, directly supports our seniors and the work that our social workers are doing. One of our social workers, just this very evening, is out on the street dealing with a crisis situation at someone's home. And, and that is partially responsible, the responsibility, the benefit is, is from those CDVG dollars. Logistically, as I was sitting here kind of thinking about this over the course of the day, and I'm no lawyer and I, you know, I've just run this by in a text message, but when you think about our childcare scholarship program, it is a, is a program that if it existed within the city, I believe that the childcare providers would need to become vendors, they would need to go through the whole ethics, you know, paperwork program. And then you have the city directly funding these businesses. And with the Fair Employment Wage Act that we passed a couple of years ago, that may also come into play allowing, because all contractors with the city, this might, not sure, but this could come into play and then we would have these childcare providers that are already running on razor thin margins. It'd be great if they could pay more, but we might be running into an issue there. So I just wanted to throw all that out there and certainly happy to discuss, but I think it's a very important program and I, I don't see very many avenues of keeping this funded through other means. There's a lot of stability with CDVG. We very much appreciate the citizens that have made these decisions and have supported us throughout the years and, you know, so I just wanted to get that out.
Thank you very much, Director Barry. I'm going to go to Mr. Bullock and then Director Anketor. Thank you very much, Director Barry. Uh, I'm going to go to Mr. Bullock and then Director Rankitour.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Barry or Director Barry, I, I hope you heard me. I'm not proposing to eliminate or reduce, but rather to make more room. And to argue, you know, so arguably, if the city cares about early childhood and senior supportive service, uh, early childhood scholarships and senior supportive services, we could view this as a core function that we fund out of our budget rather than we make, uh, some of your programs, um, apply for a variable funding source. You know, I think, I think it's fine to do it either way, uh, because the, the, probably the biggest bottleneck is just the financial capacity, what can the city afford to do? So I don't know if what I'm suggesting is possible, but really, if you look at the total CDPG allocation, a lot of it is eaten up by city administration and city internal programs. And so where I'm trying, what I'm trying to consider or figure out is how could we, um, uh, make more room for nonprofit partners? Because, because their, their financial options are probably even more limited, um, in practice. We have a cap of 20% program on the CDPG, so that's part of the answer to, kind of, why, why our allocations have developed over the years. So, you, you know, this is for a longer conversation, but please hear me correctly. Um, I think, I, I agree with everything you said. Um, I, I would hope that there's workarounds to any financial or mechanical or legal wrinkles that you are correct to raise for consideration. Appreciate that. But, but this is a friendly, a friendly proposal to make more room. And, and, you know, and your own, uh, department, uh, requested more than you were awarded or proposed to be awarded by the CAC. So that, that's another point, uh, to, to delve into. So I, I just wonder, you know, since, um, as we were saying with Director Rankitour, there's transfers from other, from the general fund to various accounts, you know, maybe there's a way that we could, we could make more room, even if it wasn't all of, of the, of the proposed funding to come from some other account. And, and that's a, a longer-term discussion. Anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, Director Rankitour, you still?
I was just going to say, that's a great discussion with the CDPG, CDPG funding. I know that's been contracting over the last few years, and, you know, it's, it's less, not only for, um, you know, some of the community organizations, but really even ourselves. We are taking less, so our administration's like $85,000 less, um, this year than it was last year in the allocation. And in Director Barry's, um, programs, it's about $8,500 less. I know also, you know, at some point during the year, should there be any, uh, extra money that shows up in the program, maybe there'd be an opportunity there for some additional reallocation of that to go back through the CAC. But I don't think we know what that is at this point, and that would just be like, uh, kind of a bonus at that point. But again, whatever's left there, uh, under the formula, it's about 15% is what would be able to be reallocated for these kinds of programs.
Mr. Litten, did you?
Uh, I, only if this discussion is, is complete.
I believe it's complete. The end. Okay.
Okay. Well, I, I just wanted to, uh, personally take the opportunity to thank the Finance Department specifically for all of its work in preparing, um, our budget book, all the adjustments that go with it. Um, you know, Director Rankitour, you've, you've done a nice job of walking us through things, and I appreciate that, uh, explaining things when we need it, um, tolerating, um, speaking for myself, dumb questions at times when the answer's right in front of me. Um, you think you were pretending it wasn't right there in front of me? Uh, and, and to our assistant finance directors as well, you know, uh, while, while Director Rankitour does most of the talking, I know that you are a lot of the work behind it all, uh, as well. And still water runs deep, as they say. Uh, Keith, I think you've spoken, um, two or three times this entire budget process, perhaps. But I know that does not represent the work that you've put into this and the, uh, the profound history you have with the city and all the work that you've done, um, for many, many years, and we appreciate it from all of you.
Ditto. Um, anything else? Yes.
Uh, just one question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, echo, great, excellent work per usual. Uh, every year the budget just gets better and better. Can't wait for next year. Twelve hours these hearings. So thank you all for your hard work. Just real quick, I did miss a few, a little bit of some of the meetings, um, it was in and out. Uh, I'm not on the committee, but committee did a great job. Good work, committee, uh, holding it down. Um, there were no substitutions during the process, right? What we're looking at tonight was, was what was submitted, uh, November, the mid-November meeting, correct? Just so I know what we're looking at. Sometimes, uh, email can be a beast, but I don't think there were substitutions for the 2023 budget. I saw the 2022 substitutions.
None for the 2023 budget.
Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great work.
Thank you. Anybody else want to compliment me or just gonna, no, that's okay. Thank you. All right. Yes, thank you. Thank you, everybody. All right.
So, I'm going to now do the important work of moving to report favorably out of committee ordinance number 35-22. It's an ordinance to take effect immediately, provided it receives affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of the members of council or otherwise to take effect and be enforced at the earliest period allowed by law to establish appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Lakewood, state of Ohio, for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022. And of course, I'm incorporating the, uh, final substitutions, um, exhibits A and B.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Great. I'll say it again. Everybody's going to say it twice. All right, that passes. Okay, ordinance 36-2022, an ordinance to, well, I'm going to move, I'll do that first. Move to report favorably out of committee ordinance 36-2022, an ordinance to take effect immediately, provided receives the affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of members of council or otherwise to take effect and to be enforced to the earliest period known by law. Authorize the transfer and advance of certain funds, specifically the, uh, transfer, the fourth quarter transfer ordinance, final substitution.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Ayes have it. That motion passes. Now I'll move to, I could read this whole thing.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, sure.
I, I'm curious if the need to read that much of it is absolutely necessary. You might be able to just read the ordinance number. For the sake of.
Sure, why not? Let's say, let's say that works. I'll read the titles. I will read Clerk Bach's abbreviated titles, even though I love reading. Okay. Number three, um, ordinance 37-2022. 2023 permanent appropriations, move to, uh, report favorably out of committee.
Second.
All right, that's seconded. Um, discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Now I'll move to report favorably out of committee. Ordinance number 38-2022, the 2023 purchasing and contracting authority ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, that's moved and seconded. All the, uh, discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Now I'll move to report favorably out of committee. Ordinance number 39-2022, the 2023 capital contracting vehicles and equipment ordinance. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, that is moved and seconded. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Now ordinance, I will move to report favorably out of committee. Ordinance number 40-2022, which is the 2023 capital contracting building and facilities ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Now I'll move to report favorably out of committee. Ordinance number 41-2022, which is the 2023 capital contracting parks and pools ordinance. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
That is moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Now I'll move to report favorably out of committee ordinance number 42-2022, which is the 2023 capital contracting sidewalk improvements ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
That moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. I'll move to report favorably out of committee. Ordinance number 43-2022, which is the 2023 capital contracting traffic signs and signals ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
That is moved and seconded. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now I'll move to report favorably out of committee. Ordinance number 44-2022, which is the 2023 capital contracting and streets ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
That's now motioned and seconded. Um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's created me up. Okay. I will move to report favorably out of committee ordinance 45-2022, the 2023 capital contracting, uh, water ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so moved and seconded. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, ayes have it. Now I'll move to report favorably out of committee ordinance 46-2022, the 2023 capital contracting sewer and wet water treatment plant ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. Tried to trip me up with an abbreviation there. Gosh damn, I was thinking wet water improvement plan and then wastewater. They're both W's. It's not fair that they have similar acronyms. Water is wet. It's not wrong. All right. Okay. Well, technically wrong, but the descriptor isn't wrong. Okay. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That, that motion passes. Um, ordinance 47-2022, uh, move to, uh, report favorably out of committee. That ordinance, which is the 2023 Planning and Development Program Contracting Authority ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion? All the, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Now I will move to report favorably out of committee, Resolution 2022-55, which is the CDPG allocation. So I'm not going to try to say what it is. Community Development Block Grant. See, I know what that is. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Now ordinance 48-2022, I will move to report favorably out of committee. That ordinance, which is the 2023 salary ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Well, again, thank you very much for bearing with me as I limped through this, um, especially towards the end. Thank you for advocating for your departments, city, and all the residents greatly appreciate the services that you provide. Thank you. We're now adjourned.